Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the USD 290 Board of Education meeting. It is January 25, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Let's call this meeting to order. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. Please raise your hand when your name is called. Linda Alderman.
Present.
Chris Cunningham.
Present.
Julie Dandrio, present. Susan Moore.
Present.
Shanda Olmstead. Melidia Payne.
Present.
Harold Wingert.
Present.
So we have seven board members in attendance tonight. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
It's moved. Oh, jinx.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 7-0. We're on to the consent agenda, which simply contains the KASB recommended policies and the acceptance of COVID funds. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
It's all moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by Harold Wingert and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approve tonight's consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. That also passes 7-0. We do not have any comments from the public tonight. So we'll move on down to our policies and contract section. We do have a presentation from Raymond James Refinance. Greg Varenberg and team of Tyler and Adrian are joining us virtually for a presentation. At the conclusion of this, the board may choose to take some action on this item tonight. Welcome. Greg, are you there? Tyler.
This is Tyler.
Hi, Tyler.
Good evening, everyone. I think that Greg is here.
And we're going to get a little more volume, Dean.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just asking Dean for a little more volume.
We can get it.
Okay.
And then maybe turn off a row of lights. Would that be possible? Not that we want Milton in the dark, but maybe that'd help.
All right, Tyler, thank you for your patience as we get our system going here. Welcome. We look forward to your presentation.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Thank you all for having us. Where we are with the proposed refinancing. Talk to you a little bit about where we are in the process. And then that may give Greg another minute or two to see if he's able to rejoin us. Because I know that he had a lot of rather detailed information. I think he was planning to keep it high level, but he had some details that I think he wanted to share about not just the refunding potential that the district is looking at this evening, but also sort of the history that he's had and the success that he and your staff have been able to achieve with refundings going back to 2002. So why don't I pull up, I'll shift gears slightly and talk a little bit about what we're doing tonight and what the, if you decide to take action, the resolution accomplished, if you decide to adopt that resolution. See if Greg joins us, and if not, we'll go on. The district has, of course, an opportunity to refund three outstanding series of bonds right now in the current interest rate environment. We have, of course, the balance of the 2015 A bond issue. We refunded about three quarters of that bond issue last year in March, April for a substantial amount of savings. That was approximately 40 to 45 million dollars refinancing. And we have the balance of that bond issue, about 13 million dollars you're making, that we have an opportunity to refinance right now. And it looks like Greg is back on the lead. Greg, are you there?
I am. I was having problems joining through the computer, so I dialed into the call. I hope everyone can hear me okay.
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Greg, I was just starting to scratch the surface about the refunding opportunity that the district has currently, but do you want to back up and talk about sort of the highlights that you want to hit in your presentation this evening?
Sure, that would be great. And thanks again, everyone, and sorry for the difficulties accessing the meeting, but appreciate the chance to participate. You know, the district has taken advantage of low interest rate opportunities several times over the years. And I was fortunate to have the opportunity to start working with the district back in 2002. And over the last 19 years, the district has completed bond refinancing six separate times. And as many of the board members will remember, the most recent opportunity was in 2020, where we were able to capture 9.6 million in savings and shorten the repayment schedule by four years. And what's really interesting, if you look at the cumulative savings going back over those six prior opportunities, and it now totals an actual dollar savings of about 12.4 million dollars that the district has locked in previously, with interest rates still being low and looking at the portion of the outstanding bonds that we did not refinance last year, that now appear to be candidates for refinancing. It appears that there is a, an opportunity to capture an additional savings of about 1,387,000 dollars. And so we wanted to bring this to the board's attention, see if this is something that the board wanted to move forward with and capture the savings. In regards to interest rates, which really led to this opportunity, we've had a low interest rate environment for several years now. But with the pandemic last year, it really pushed interest rates quite a bit lower. And last August, we set an all-time record low in the municipal bond market. Shortly after setting that all-time record low, we watched interest rates go up about a half percent as we headed into the presidential election. But since that time, we've come back down about 30 basis points or three tenths of a percent. And currently, we're at about two tenths of a percent above the all-time historic record low in the bond market. So the low-interest rate environment has created another window of opportunity for the district and other issuers of bonds to capture savings from the low-interest rate. The refinancing opportunity that's available to the district currently, we're looking at refinancing a portion of the 2012 bonds, the 2013 bonds, and the 2015 bonds. And it's primarily in the years 2023 through 2030 out of those three series of bonds. Those bonds have an average interest rate that's well above current market rate. It's about 4.8%. The estimated interest rate on the refinancing would be about 1.22%. So a pretty significant drop in that average interest rate. And it's that interest rate decline or reduction that results in the savings to the district of about 1,387,000. Also, as we did in 2020, we looked at an opportunity not only to take advantage of low interest rates, but shorten up the repayment schedule. And on this refinancing that we're looking at, we would be able to move the final payment from 2030 to 2028. So we would be able to capture that savings, but also shorten up the repayment schedule by two years. And one of the things that we look at when we're considering the bond refinancing is that we want to capture our savings, but we also want to revisit the mill levy projections in your Code 62 Bond and Interest Fund to make sure that we're not doing something that will impact the mill levy or push the mill levy higher. And so one of the things that we have focused on is that no levy analysis. You're currently levying about 17.9 mills in the bond and interest fund. You've got a healthy fund balance in that account. And when we look at the savings that you captured last year, plus the savings opportunity currently, plus where you've been setting the mill levy and the balance you have in that fund, it doesn't look like there is any pressure on that mill levy, even after the shortening of the repayment schedule last year that shortened it by about four or five years. And then now taking the portion of bonds we're refinancing this year, shortening it by two years. So that's the opportunity that is available to the district. And as many of you may recall, the process that we went through last year on the refinancing, and it's the same process you would go through currently. The first step from the Board of Education perspective is to consider adoption of the authorizing resolution. That gives us formal permission to go ahead and lock in interest rates and complete the refinancing and then bring the final savings back to the district for consideration. So the resolution that's presented to you this evening is that authorizing resolution. We've also tried to, you know, given where interest rates are at and how strong the bond market has been in January, we wanted to make sure we were positioned to move forward quickly. If this is something that you would like to capture and move forward with. And so we're in a position where we could go ahead and complete the sale as early as later this week, potentially on Thursday. We would then bring the final bond resolution back to the board at its meeting on February 8. And it's at that point in time that you would have the bond resolution presented to you with the final interest rates and amounts. And if everything was acceptable at that point, you would adopt the bond resolution. And that would allow us to go ahead and complete the refinancing, which would be completed somewhere around March 1. So that's an overview of the opportunity that's available to the district. But it's pretty exciting, again, when you think back to how I started the discussion this evening, that you've built up cumulative savings so far of about 12.4 million. And if you were able to capture about 1.3 million more on this opportunity, that would bring the total savings in the district to about 13.8 billion, which is a significant amount of money, obviously, that stays in the district rather than be paid out to bond investors. So with that, I'll be happy to stop and answer any questions, or I can turn it over to Tyler for any comments he may have.
Board members, do you have any questions for this gentleman before we move forward?
So the 17.9 mills, is that what all these bonds represent right now?
Yes, if I heard the question correctly, the 17.9 mills in the bond and interest fund. You've currently been, in prior years, you've been levying about 18 to 19 mills in the bond and interest fund. And I believe your current budget ended up with about 17.994 mills. And so we ran our analysis to see if, using, you know, conservative but reasonable assumptions on state aid and assessed valuation, if after the refinancing, you'd be able to stay at the 17.99 mill. And it does look like that would be the case. And you'd still be able to carry a fund balance in that bond and interest fund of over a million in each of the years.
Okay. And I guess my follow-up question is, I think, if I remember right, in 2020, when we refinanced and saved almost 10 million, that 10 million savings represented, I think, 1.5 mills. Is that about right? So I'm just asking if, once we start saving another 1.3, almost 1.4 million, is there any savings there on mills, or are we just going to stay flat?
And I had a hard time hearing the question, but it sounded like after the mill levy impact from the 9.6 million in savings last year, will this added amount of savings, the 1.3 million on top of that, take further pressure off of the bond and interest fund mill levy? And the answer is yes. The more we lower the expenses coming out of the bond and interest fund, the less pressure you have on that mill levy. And as you've done over the last several years, you've actually been able to lower it from about 19.89 mills to 17.994 mills. And one of the things that we look at is not only the payments coming out of the bond and interest fund, but also state aid and assessed valuation growth. And when you look at where you have been in terms of state aid, you go back over the last five years, you've kind of risen from 42% to a high of 51%. I believe you're currently about 49%. So you've had a little bit of growth on state aid. But then the last five years, your assessed valuation has grown at about 4.34%. And in our mill levy analysis, we're showing a growth rate of about 2%. So if you have that continuation of favorable assessed valuation growth, maybe you pick up some additional state aid percentage, and then you lower the expenses in the bond and interest fund as a result of the refinancing. All of those things coupled together put you in that position to potentially lower that mill levy or take the pressure off of the mill levy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
You're welcome. I hope that answered your question.
It did. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Greg. We appreciate that information. Board, if somebody would like to make a motion at this point to pass the resolution authorizing Raymond James to seek and lock in and complete the refinance options for us on the behalf of USD 290. They could certainly do that.
I would like to entertain that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by Susan Moore and seconded by Harold Wingert that we grant the resolution described previously. I will do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio? Yes. Susan Moore?
Yes, and we appreciate all your hard work.
Shanda Olmstead?
Thank you.
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0. Greg, thank you so much for being here and for your presentation, for working so hard for us. And Tyler and Adrian, thank you as well for being here.
Greg, before you go away, is the only thing that you...
Have a nice evening.
Greg, before you go away, is the only thing that you need from us tonight, the signed document from Julie?
Yes, and actually, we don't need the signed document now that we know that you've approved it. I know Tyler will eventually need signature pages on the authorizing resolution, but no hurry tonight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just whenever you have time.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks again.
You're welcome. All right, so we are ready to move to the next section. This next area is just for discussion tonight. We are not taking action. We have two folks presenting from UV disinfectant systems, I guess it's Violet Defense school systems. So we have Ally and Terry here with us virtually. Welcome. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Great. Welcome. We look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Is it available for me to go ahead and hit present now?
Yes.
All right, so can everyone see a Violet Defense UV Disinfection Solutions page?
No.
Okay. And then if I can get started, first of all, thank you very much. Oh, all right. Was that a yes or a no in terms of being able to see the page?
That was a no. We see you and Ally.
I wonder if I need to be invited to present. Let me go back to this again. How about now?
No. We have it now. Thank you.
Okay, I apologize.
No problem.
All right, so first of all, thank you very much for the time. Ally and I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you what we do as a company. And in particular, I grew up in Kansas, so I have a real fondness for kind of getting back to the state a little bit. So to give you a little bit of background on us, so as a company, we've actually been around since 2009, mostly in the research and development space. And the whole purpose for the company was to try to bring a cost-effective means for disinfection into everyday spaces. So I have spent almost a decade of my life in the infection control world, chaired committees at the health system level, and know just how big an issue it is to make sure that you have the proper disinfection mechanisms. And the challenge that we always struggled with as a hospital is that while we could afford the really high-end solutions, there was never anything that was available that was cost-effective that you could put in a school or in a hotel or in a public government building. And so our founder, about a decade ago, set off on a mission to find a solution. That is what created Violet Defense as a company. And we've now been actively producing products and delivering it for, this will be, I guess, two and a half years now. And we'll go through some of our kind of reference organizations that we've worked with. But our whole purpose for having the presentation here tonight is to find a collaborative research partner for us on the public school side. So as we have gotten to know our own technology, while the one thing that we have... So as we have gotten to know our own technology, well, the one thing that we have learned is that we can't possibly know how people are going to use it best. Um, and so almost all of our innovation has come from finding partners that will work with us, uh, to give us feedback on what they like. Frankly, give us lots of feedback on what you don't like. Uh, and then that allows us to kind of improve the product to be able to meet the needs of the, the customer base that we're targeting. Uh, so that's essentially what the discussion is tonight. Let me start a little bit with just the fundamentals of UV disinfection, because I think it's important for people to understand what it is and what it is not. So I'll start with ultraviolet is just essentially the section of light that is below the visible spectrum. And it is, uh, a tremendously valuable, um, disinfection mechanism because the energy of that light, uh, does some wonderful things in terms of killing germs. Essentially, it attacks the DNA and RNA of the germ. Um, and depending on what type of germ, it will also destroy the cell wall, which means they cannot replicate. And if they can't replicate, uh, then very quickly, the colony of germs dies. There's a really good quote from Dr. Nardell at Harvard, which talks about UV as being a well-proven, extremely safe technology. Uh, it's underused and often misunderstood. Um, and at this point, no one really doubts the efficacy of it. The big question is, can you come up with a product that actually is cost-effective and, more importantly, operationally effective? Especially in an environment like a school. So we always talk about the, um, commercial use of UV, actually going back about 140 years. The practical use goes back as long as you believe the earth has been in existence, because the sun has been doing it for a very long time. But it started in the late 1800s, uh, was used pretty extensively by the military, um, in the 1930s, 1940s. Uh, was actually used for a lot of water treatment in the 50s. And then, um, we came to realize it would be cheaper to dump chemicals in the water, and it would be cheaper to give people antibiotics. And so it kind of disappeared for about 40 years. Uh, and then started to kind of reassert itself back in the 90s and the early 2000s. Uh, in 2006, uh, the EPA started providing guidance. And then, uh, obviously with COVID, uh, it's kind of front and center with a whole lot of, um, people that are exploring it, because the standard mechanisms for disinfection, um, just are not meeting the needs of the environments that they're targeted toward. We talk about, we, we are a big fan of validated, uh, testing. So if somebody tells you something is capable of doing something, they should be able to prove it. Uh, on the UV side, when you look at the list of names that are here that have all done testing on UV, uh, it's a pretty, uh, comprehensive list, uh, which confirms at least that UV as a technology works. And we like this quote because it's, it's interesting how many people, um, still question whether UV is capable of delivering. And so for us, anything that's not done by a reputable laboratory, um, we would suggest questioning. And that includes, if we ever show you anything, uh, like that, you should question us. So we, over the last year in particular, um, as we've spent a lot of time with various organizations, from the Orlando Magic to a private school system, to the, uh, Metro Transit Authority in New York City, we always talk about what we call the effectiveness triangle. Essentially, for anybody who's gonna be, uh, evaluating disinfection solutions, whether it's UV or otherwise, at the end of the day, it has to kill germs, which means it has to be clinically effective. It has to fit your budget, means it has to be cost-effective. But probably as important as ever, now that the level of disinfection has risen substantially and the frequency with which people are disinfecting has grown, is it has to be operationally effective. And so many of the traditional means of disinfection worked well when you were doing it once or twice a day. And you were doing it, you know, only, you know, when something was dirty, as opposed to, in some cases, you know, multiple times a day, seven days a week. And so for clinical effectiveness, the real question is, has it been independently validated? And in particular, is it capable of both addressing bacteria and viruses? While so much of the interest currently has been on coronavirus, the reality is, this problem existed long before coronavirus showed up. Whether it's MRSA, or it's C. diff, or it's norovirus, or it's E. coli, or it's salmonella. And all of those are actually very susceptible to being killed by UV. We have a little, um, kind of acronym for what we ask people, uh, which is called, will it do that? The W stands for what wavelength does it operate at? Um, the I stands for what intensity does it provide? The D is how long, uh, or how far has the product actually been tested? It's amazing how many products are on the marketplace that claim they can disinfect, you know, entire rooms. And then when you look at their lab testing, they've been tested at two inches. And then lastly, how long is it gonna take? Because that's critical to the operation of your, uh, organization. And then operationally, how does it fit into the way you're actually doing your cleaning today? Does it require a lot of labor? Does it disrupt the way your day is supposed to run? Uh, and those are all pretty important things to consider when you decide what you're gonna do for your overall disinfection protocols. And then the cost, we typically look at a lifecycle cost arrangement, um, because, you know, there are things like chemicals that look inexpensive initially, uh, but you consistently buy them over and over and over again. And there are others that may look more expensive initially because they're capital purchases, but they have very low operating costs. Uh, so at least for us, we typically do a five-year look. And then, uh, you know, that'll give you a better true cost comparison. So we'll talk about us right now. So we have a patented technology that essentially allows us to miniaturize the deployment of high-intensity UV. So that picture to the right is essentially a four-inch by four-inch square. That then develops itself into two products, which we'll show. But because it is so small, uh, it can actually be deployed in a myriad of different ways. It produces all spectrums of UV, so UVA, UVB, and UVC, which means it's capable of killing both viruses and bacteria. It will not degrade materials over time, which is really important. And the lens itself doesn't degrade over time. So a lot of the early UV deployments, um, go the way of your kid's toy, if you leave a plastic toy outside in the sun for very long. And so we think that as a result of that, when we go back to the effectiveness triangle, uh, it creates some pretty substantial advantages for us. We can kill up to 99.9% of bacteria and viruses at distance. And we've tested them against a bunch of the different pathogens, including being one of the few companies that's actually tested against the COVID virus itself. Our cost-effectiveness, and we'll show you an example of what we call our Flash M3, which is three of our small units. It runs less than $2 per disinfecting cycle, including the capital cost. And then from an operational perspective, there's a lot of different ways you can deploy it. And that's what we want to test with you guys. So here's our testing. Um, and if you actually look at the distances, right, we tested meters, right? We don't test in inches. Um, and we had a real-world operating test about six months ago, where one of our customers said, "We love your lab testing, but we want to do our own." So they went and collected 11 samples inside their operating room, four in the air and seven on surfaces. And in all 11 samples after the disinfection cycle, there was no bacteria detected. This is the testing, uh, and there's gonna be a white paper coming out shortly. Uh, but whether it was on glass, on steel, on plastic, or we actually had one where they were doing the N95 mask, um, material, uh, we were able to kill in excess of 99% of the SARS-CoV-2 virus. It's hard to find a lab that can actually test for this. These are our two products. Uh, so the one on the left is about the size of a textbook. Uh, the one on the right is basically a two-foot by six-inch by six-inch. That's designed to put in a drop ceiling. Because these are so flexible, we can put them in a bunch of different, um, formats, and they run in different modes. So we've designed these units to be what we call autonomous. And that means that you just let it run, and it will read the room, and it will operate when people are not there. You can put it in a scheduled mode, which is what the Orlando Magic do. And so they essentially have them run at night on a disinfection cycle on a regular schedule. Or we have what's called single-cycle mode, and that is particularly for units that are gonna move from one room to the next. Uh, and so you plug it in, it runs a cycle, it stops. You go grab it, you retrieve it, you move it to the next room or to the next location, and you can start it back up again. When I talk about the myriad of different ways that we can deploy it, um, I, I was surprised even as to how many we've done. So if you look at installed solutions, uh, what you see is that we actually have them in a back of an ambulance, and they're installed in the ceiling. The one that's in the, looks like it's suspended, uh, is we do have a pendant version. Uh, that's actually at the Orlando Magic. The one next to it is a cantilever, uh, which allows us to mount it over, uh, kitchen prep area. Uh, the next one is actually installed in a drop ceiling. The next one is actually a bath fan that's installed in a bathroom. In addition to the installed units, you can put them on mobile. So those are all either tripods, or they are stands that are wheeled. Or we have really small portable ones that you could literally put on your desk. I'll go back to these three for a second. If you notice, they're all the same unit. So one of the unique things about our design is that if you buy mobile units, and you don't like them, and you want to put them in the ceiling, you can then turn them into installed units, or you can turn them into portable units. It's exactly the same unit, so it has ultimate flexibility. The next thing that we did most recently, we now have, um, 10, uh, Division 1 schools, including the University of Kansas using it, um, is we decided to create a series of lockers. The one in the upper right, sorry, go ahead.
No, we're fine. Thank you. Go ahead and continue.
Okay. Yeah. So we basically have lockers, uh, that are specifically designed for things like, um, electronics equipment. We have the large trailer, uh, which we're currently using with a lot of, um, you know, police, uh, where they want to be able to take them around to clean things like bomb gear. Um, and then we have a sports decon case, um, which we are specifically using for things like footballs and volleyballs and basketballs. And then, if we're doing just a quick comparison on cost, so now we're at the cost-effectiveness side. If you look at about a thousand-square-foot space, and you decide to disinfect it every day for a five-year period of time, what you'll see on the Violet Defense side is that the cost per disinfection cycle ends up being about half, uh, by the time you look at the lifecycle. Because an installed unit has no labor, um, and very little electricity, it's all capital cost. Uh, the mobile units are more capital cost and then some labor. But then when you compare that to like chemical disinfection, uh, there's a huge amount of, um, operational cost associated just with continually buying chemicals, and then a lot more labor. Now, there is another big, I don't even know how to call it a competitor, but there's a, another big, uh, pulse xenon company out there called Xenex. Um, they were just, um, announced that they're gonna do some work with the San Antonio Spurs. But their unit, they're $125,000 for a single unit. And they run about $5,000 a year in annual maintenance. So they end up not being a real viable solution for, um, folks that are on a budget. Now, here's an important thing, I think, specifically as you guys are kind of thinking through what is needed in a school. So when you start thinking about disinfecting with chemicals, you do have a lot of labor associated with that. Depending on the chemicals that you use, you may have PPE cost as well. And you may also have disposal cost. The chemicals themselves, um, if they're really going after things like a coronavirus, tend to be pretty caustic, uh, which can actually have impacts on, uh, materials. And the biggest challenge is that operationally, every chemical has a slightly different, um, kind of mode of operation. And so you need to make sure that you've got every surface covered in the right way for the right period of time, uh, in order for disinfection to happen. And then if you do all of that, and you do that well, you've cleaned the surface. Uh, what you haven't done is you haven't cleaned the air. And so in a relatively short period of time, whatever pathogens are floating in the air are right back down on your surface again. This is just a eye chart for you, but that there's a myriad of different solutions that are out there. This is the Xenex unit that I was describing, that is a $125,000 unit. So obviously, we're proud of our technology, and we have gotten, um, some pretty good response from a wide array of people who are currently using our product. So as I'd mentioned, we are in the Emily Center, uh, with the Orlando Magic. Uh, we started there by doing their player spaces. Then the coaches wanted them, so we ended up doing the coaches' spaces. Then the mascot wanted, uh, a custom design for his uniform, so we actually built that. Then the employees that were not part of the, the team staff decided they want it. Uh, in fact, they even bought units specifically to disinfect, uh, their room for draft day. And then in short order, we'll be announcing, uh, a big install of our product in their new practice facility. We're working with first responders, uh, we're working with public transportation. We have a private school that we've worked with here. And we've done some lab work too, uh, in particular for cleaning things like the vent hoods, uh, where they're doing their testing. So here's what we want to do, um, which is basically to give you guys a bunch of product. And we want to do that because we really want good quality feedback. Um, and after having, uh, a conversation, kind of earlier, uh, with Ryan, we were excited about kind of the forward-thinking nature of the school department, uh, or the school district. And, um, it seems like the kind of organization that is gonna give us real, direct, um, and honest feedback about what works and what doesn't, to help us make everything better. Uh, so what we would intend to do is provide you with the different type of mobile units, install in a couple of locations, uh, ideally probably a classroom and maybe a bathroom, give you a sports decon case. And then basically, what we would like in return is feedback. So let us know what worked and what doesn't work. And we'd love to actually get some pictures and video of how that's actually being used, uh, so that we can understand it, and that, so we can get some benefit as we go talk to other schools. And that's kind of the sum total. This is not a financial proposal. So what we want to do is we're intending to give you feed, or give you product if you will give us feedback. And so I will, and unless you want me to go back to any additional pages.
Thank you for that information. Board members, do you have any questions?
What process do you use to determine whether, uh, your product worked or not? Do you, what do you do?
Yeah. So we, when we are testing, uh, or when we're bringing any product to market, the first thing that we do is we will test with a company called Microchem. Uh, so they're a clinical lab that is, uh, validated by both the EPA and the FDA out of Texas. They're one of the leaders in testing UV products. And so everything we do is validated by them before we'll bring it to the marketplace. And we provide all of our customers all of the testing data, um, that comes out of that. So they have that in hand at the beginning.
I guess I was getting a little more specific, uh, like, are, do you provide materials for us to go in and swab surfaces? Beeted dishes? I mean, really, how do you do it? How do I know the classroom's been disinfected?
So what we have typically done is we'll work with, and in most cases, you're probably gonna have, I'd say at least three, if not four or five, especially being, you know, as close to Lawrence and Kansas City as you guys are. Uh, there are lab, uh, tests that, or lab testing companies that specifically do testing for any food crap that's there. Uh, it's actually required by the FDA, uh, you know, that these, uh, factories have to be tested on a regular basis. So there's a series of swab tests that you can do. So, there's a series of swab tests that you can do. We've done that, we use a company called Covance out of Wisconsin to do a lot of ours, but I'm guessing there'd be EMSL, it's probably in Lawrence again, or Kansas City. And what we would do is we would work with you to help validate, we do before and after testing, we can do, you know, a significant number of just after testing, because at the end of the day, while it's not as accurate as lab testing, because it's hard to control all the variables in a, an environment that isn't a controlled environment, we do a lot of it, and would absolutely help you kind of go through that and confirm what you want on the clinical side, as well as give you whatever training we can on the operational
Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, Chris?
So, on this equipment, what is like the maintenance or lifespan? Maybe you said that earlier in your presentation, but I just didn't pick up on it.
So, each one of these units are designed for a minimum of 5,000 disinfection cycles, and it's measured in cycles because depending on how you use it, its actual life in terms of years will vary. So, if you're running them like the Orlando Magic do, and so they run two disinfecting cycles a night, you're talking about 2,500 days of projected light. So, that's seven years. If you run them once a day, you're talking 14 or 15. If you want to run them 10 cycles a day, right, you're talking probably a year plus. And so, if you were then going to translate it into cost, assuming you were paying for them, that's where you end up with the less than $2 for disinfecting cycle in terms of the actual life cycle cost.
Okay. I had two other questions. One, does it, and you may have said this already, does it affect like any of the finishes on objects in the rooms?
Well, that's a great question, because depending on what type of UV light you use, the answer is either yes or no. So, we use Pulse Xenon specifically because it is a, or one of the reasons why is because it's a technology that does not degrade materials, and the reason for that is because it is a pulse. So, in a 30-minute disinfection cycle, our bulb is only going to be on for about two seconds. It's going to look like a flash strobe, and so every six seconds, it will just, it will pop. So, it produces UV, but it doesn't have that consistent UV exposure that you would get from a more traditional mercury bulb. And so, again, I'm making a claim, now how do we know that to be true? And our kind of partner company, if you will, Xenex, did a five-year study with Mayo, and they were using these inside the hospital rooms in the Mayo Clinic for a five-year period of time with no degradation. So, one of the better tests you could imagine.
Yeah, the reason I ask that is because in like probably the last six or eight years to here presently, most of all of our furniture and all of our buildings is new, if my memory serves me right. And the only other follow-up question I have, I know some of our schools, plus the high school, science, they have animals or insects in their classroom for educational purposes. Now, would we have to be worried about those?
So, you would not want to use this technology if you have live animals in the room without providing them with some type of protection during the disinfection cycle. So, there's multitudes of ways, if you had them, for example, in cages and wanted to cover them while you were running the cycle, you could certainly do that, but that would be one of the things that we would recommend you not do. In particular, if they happen to move, all of our technology has motion detection built into it. So, if, for example, somebody were to walk into the room while the units were running, the units will pause until motion stops. And so, if you had a room that was active with, you know, any type of animals in there, it probably wouldn't even get a disinfection cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question, Lydia?
I had a question. How long would the units be here before the first time there was any testing done so we would know how it was working?
That would actually be up to you. So, our intent with this is to provide you product and then work with you to figure out how you want to actually validate and, you know, create feedback on it. What we've often done is we've gone into environments in advance, and we just did swabs to see if we could identify where you had issues and where you didn't. But there wasn't even a before and after, there was just a before. And then, once you know what that environment looks like and where your hot spots are, right, then you can have, you know, say a week of operation, and then you go back and you test those same spots again to see if you're getting consistent disinfection, or if you're still running into the hot spots.
And then, like in that week, would we continue with the cleaning that we had, the procedures that we had been doing, or would we stop those cleaning procedures?
So, it is a strong recommendation of ours that the, any disinfection protocol that you have is going to be multimodal. So, you're not going to want to stop, for example, wiping down your high-touch surfaces, because you're going to probably do those kind of things during the day. You probably will not need the same terminal clean that you have if you're using our technology, but we would happily run A/B tests, for example, where maybe you stop doing it in one room and you continue doing it in another room, and then you can actually compare the results.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
I do have one question. With this technology, do things have to be in line of sight for it to be affected?
Line of sight or line of reflection. And so, one of the things that's pretty interesting about UV is depending on surfaces, you can get a lot of reflection. So, we were actually surprised, but we did a test with a company called Sedexo, who you may know, they're a large contract cleaning company. And they did a mock hospital bedroom setup, where they put samples on the rails, they put samples on the door handles, but they also put a sample under the bed. And we actually had a 99% or greater disinfection on all 15 samples, including what was under the bed. And so, the way the UV got there was it was reflecting off of glass, porcelain, chrome, any type of the metallic materials. And so, by room, what we would do as part of our recommendation is we would look at how do you minimize your shadowing risk? I mean, I'm looking at the lights right now in your room in the board meeting, you notice that there's not one of them, right? There's multiple, because if you just had one big light in the center of the room, you'd end up with a lot of shadows. So, the way you deal with that is you have multiple lights that are distributed. Because our lights are so small, we actually find that in many cases, more small lights is much better than a couple of big lights because of exactly what you described on the shadowing.
All right, thank you very much.
So, I have a question, and this kind of piggybacks off what Julie was saying. So, if you put multiple, let's say three or four of these in a classroom, in theory, you aren't just cleaning the top of the surfaces, you're touching, you're getting everything that I might touch. So, take this boardroom, for example. I mean, we'd even be getting things like doorknobs and other things that we want normally, commonly disinfect. Or we, I guess I'm just trying to think, so we'd be disinfecting the whole room, is that correct?
That is correct. So, just looking at the room right now, I'll talk about the typical places that you would not get with a normal chemical clean. So, unless they're doing it every night, you're not going to disinfect anything in the carpet. You're not going to disinfect anything in the air column from the ceiling down to the top of a surface. You may or may not be disinfecting the seat cushions. You're most certainly not going to disinfect the walls. But because light travels everywhere, anywhere that the light touches or the light reflects to will actually produce a disinfection at some level, and if it's within a reasonable distance, it will disinfect at a very high level. So, the reason why this presents a different opportunity is now that you can clean not only surfaces, but also the air, which is where our product name came from. So, Sage stands for Surface and Air Grim Elimination.
And my last, my last question is a sports-related question. I'm sure you'll find this interesting, even though it's not with Kansas University, which some people do find a great test site, by the way. My daughter's currently playing basketball for the freshmen, and you said you have a sports deal that you put balls in. One discussion we've had great length here with the other leagues and other schools is, you know, sports and that. So, can you, you said you had a apparatus we could put footballs or basketballs in, and it sterilizes the basketballs?
Yes. Yeah, so actually, the UV decon locker, it's basically a standard ATA case, which we have aluminum lined so that you have massive amounts of reflectivity in there. We've put two units in there, and as a result of kind of the side-by-side exposure and all the reflectivity, you can disinfect footballs, volleyballs, soccer balls. But we've also started seeing people disinfect things like hockey pads and goalies gloves. So, it's designed to be essentially a self-contained, highly reflective UV case that you can use to disinfect almost anything. It was originally envisioned, though, for sports equipment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much for presenting to us tonight. I certainly appreciate it, and Dr. Cobb will be getting back with you.
Well, thank you very much for the time, we really appreciate it.
Terry, just so, just so you know, as we, as we move forward, we'll give our board the next few weeks to do their own research and think about the proposal that we have in hand. We'll bring this back to a board on February 8th, I believe, is our next board meeting, to determine whether or not we'll engage in the, in the pilot program as you described. So, we'll know here pretty quickly.
Fantastic. And if there's anything else you need along the way in terms of any of our information or the clinical validation, whatever the board wants, just let us know.
That'll be awesome. Thanks, Terry, thank you, Ally. We appreciate you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
All right, we are moving on to section 5.03, which is the 2021-22 calendar. Dr. Cobb?
Okay, so we had a conversation earlier in the year about calendars. We had two different options, and I think as, as we forget, it's almost February already, so we probably need to be thinking about what our calendar proposal is for next year. My recommendation would be to utilize Draft Calendar 1, if Deena clicked on that. It has teachers coming back on August 10th, students' first day is August the 16th, but that will be a half-day for, for most students, and a half-day for new students and freshmen, and I think sixth graders at middle school and high school. The, the biggest piece of this is that some of you began to see the, the issues that exist when we don't finish the semester at the break, and the, the issues that arise with expectations of students and preparation for assessments and all of those things. So, this does have us completing the end of first semester before we move to winter break. It also has spring break on March 15th through, or 14th through the 18th, which should align to the region schools. We'll see if they all fall in line with that. But then, everybody who has kids at one of the region schools should be able to share spring break with them. April is your typical long month in there, and then you have the last, the last month in May, which gets us back to kind of a normal cycle and something we haven't seen now for a little while. But finishing the year on May 18th with a workday on May 19th, possible snow makeup days would actually be 20, or 19, 20, and 23 within the workday moved to 19. So, depending on how you want to see that is what it looks like. But currently, we would see the workday on the 19th with no expectation of additional snow days.
I had a question. The difference between, one of the differences is Calendar 1 has a flex day in December, Calendar 2 does not.
Right, so, the, the difference is, is that when we move past, so part of the MOA, if you remember, that we saw this year when we moved past the winter break, is that there's, that the flex day is there because people can work over break whenever they need to. When the break exists after, or when the end of the semester exists after the break, then you fall back into some different language, which would state that there has to be a workday at the completion of every semester. So, the flex day goes away and it becomes an actual workday embedded in, in the semester.
Okay.
Any questions about calendar?
All right, are we ready to take some action?
Madam President, I move that we pass Calendar 1 with the enthusiastic deal that all the spring breaks line up together. I don't know if that's going to pan out, but we at least have our set now.
I'm going to second it, just because the semester ends before Christmas.
I agree with that.
Okay. It was moved by Harold Wingert and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approve the first calendar. We'll do a rule call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0.
I think there's another piece of the calendar conversation that needs to occur. I didn't want to have it along with this, is to not confuse anybody in the purpose of the conversation of the calendar. But one of the, one of the calendar options that was presented as a, as maybe an eye-opener last time, or certainly an option to consider down the road, would be an alternative calendar or a year-round calendar. My, my question to the board is whether or not there's any interest in our board in having me pursue a conversation with our community, with our staff, with our students, and with our parents, as to whether or not that option is one that we would want to at least engage in conversation down the road. I do not want to expend energy on something that, that our board really has no desire to, to consider fully as we move forward, which is why I asked the question. But if there is at least interest in doing so, I think myself and the other administrators within the district office would be happy to expend that energy and find out how our community would respond to it, the benefits, if there are other options in terms of a year-round calendar. I think it's important to remember that the year-round calendar does not add days to the calendar. It is still 183 contract days for our staff, it is still 169 and a half student days, student contact days. So, it doesn't change in terms of, of the volume of work, it changes in where the work falls over the course of the year. So, again, there was a great deal of support from staff as we, as we presented it, and we had a number of people. We had some community members that came and asked me about when we would be able to engage in that conversation. But again, it is for this board to determine whether or not that's a conversation that we want to, to at least engage in and see where we go, certainly without the impact of, of implementing or considering implementation within at least the next year and a half.
Let's just go around, start at one end, and just say yes or no if you're open to hearing more about this and having Dr. Cobb do some investigation into this possibility and meeting with those stakeholders. Shanda?
I would consider it at this point. I would lean more towards a no, but it needs to be a good fit for the community and all of our staff.
So, you're open to seeing if that is the case? Okay. Chris?
Yes, I'm open to it. As I've stated before, I think we're going to have some educational gaps that we need to figure out how to not have such a hangover, and I would like to see where everybody else feels about that and kind of what the data shows after we kind of dive into this.
I think it's worth exploring. I'd like to know how the community feels about it, and I also like the fact, like Chris said, that we can use those opportunities between nine-week increments to help kids that perhaps have fallen a little bit behind instead of waiting till summer school, when it's perhaps a little late at that point.
Yeah, and summer school's kind of crunched too, a little more.
Sure. I'm certainly open to hearing more about it and seeing what our stakeholders feel about that and getting some more information.
Great.
Carol?
My initial reaction's kind of like K-State basketball. I think it's dead on arrival, but I'm not opposed to the discussion of it, because I don't think that having discussion, exploration, but, you know, you ask my personal belief, I kind of think we need a new coach at K-State basketball, and I'm not so sure I'm a big fan of this, so that's my thought.
Susan?
So, I grew up in a year-round system overseas, and it was natural for me. I mean, it was odd that we had summers off and we came back here. So, for me, I definitely would be open to hearing about it. We are in the business of educating our children and following the data, and also being a good partner for the community, and so, if that's the way that we need to go, then we do to help fill those gaps that we currently have been incurring because of this unprecedented time that we're in. It's also based on an agrarian It's also based on an agrarian society, and while we have a lot of agriculture in our community, I don't know that the same pressures on those farms existed, existed back when originally the school system was set up that way. So, I'm definitely interested in it. I think it would help fill some of the voids we need.
Thank you. Melidia?
I do not think it would be a good fit for our community, and I think that we have many other things that we could use our attention and focus on that would be better use of time. So, I'm a no.
Right. Thank you. All right. Dr. Cobb's, did I give you the feedback that you were looking for?
Sure. That'll help. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to section five point oh four. Mr. Robinson is back with the therapy animals policy. I think that just a small change was made in that, and then we do need to take some action on this tonight.
Yeah, and I don't think we even need Mr. Robinson to come up. Melidia asked some great questions last time, specifically about where, in essence, the buck stops. Who, who makes the final determination about where this lands? And so, ultimately, we made some changes within the policy to indicate that the superintendent was, is the ultimate decision-maker on the approval of any therapy dog within the building. So, that piece is the lone change. Everything else stands as the way that it was presented to the board before, but it is very clear at this point that no building principal or any individual within a building has the ability to approve those things. They can make, make the recommendation to the superintendent, and ultimately, that decision will be made here in this office.
Thank you for clarifying that, and we did get this information last week, so we've had time to read through it and, and have any other questions answered. Would somebody like to make a motion at this time to approve this policy for service animals?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It was moved by Melidia Payne and seconded by Susan Moore that we accept this service animal policy. We'll do a rule call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh. Next section, five point oh five, is the negotiations M O A. We need to take action to approve the M O A that Dr. Cobb's is going to briefly review for us.
Yeah, so, last Wednesday, I think, Linda and Melidia and I met with, with O E A to discuss continued benefits for COVID leave, even though they're no longer protected under the, under the law and the CARES Act. So, the language that we came up with, if Dean would actually move over to the new M O A language, looks like this. In essence, what it states is that any teacher who has, who has been recommended for quarantine or has tested positive may continue to provide services to, to our students, either via remote instruction or by videotaping themselves providing instruction to give to the substitute. And if they do so, then, then their leave will be taken care of by the district, and they will not have to use their own personal or sick leave. If they choose not to, then in essence, they have to use their own sick leave. And that's really what it comes down to. There were a number of different questions that were asked. One was about internet connectivity. One was about if your children are sick. We worked through those things, and there's a very clear expectation that we do have two options for internet issues that, that our staff can utilize. And, and the only way that children are covered under this is if, if your children are quarantined and you are quarantined as well. If children are quarantined, but you have not been quarantined as the staff member, then ultimately, you're still responsible to come to work. You can choose to, to be a great parent and stay at home and take care of your kids, but in doing so, you elect to take sick leave, which is what the benefit is for. So, in essence, that's what the, that's what the, the language indicates and was ratified by teachers on, on Friday afternoon.
Would somebody like to take action on this?
I'd just like to add, the flowchart really helps clarify it, too. Good flowchart.
I'd like to thank Josh for putting together the flowchart. He took my notes off of an Excel document because I didn't have the flowchart document and, and turned it into something great. So, we can, we can thank Josh for that.
Madam President, I want to thank Linda and Melidia for their efforts for working with this O E A and negotiating this M O A, and I make a motion we accept it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I think the teachers really appreciate this as well. That's what I've heard anyway.
I hope so. I think, yeah.
I agree.
It was moved by Harold Wingert and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approve the M O A as stated. Rule call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh. We are down to five point oh six, which is the change in the calendar to get rid of that workday on June first that we talked about at our last meeting. Dr. Cobb's, did you have anything to add on that?
There's nothing to add here. It simply takes out the last day, the last workday, and, and still continues to have the expectation that all grade cards are in by June first, which would have been the, the workday anyways. But it does help our retired teachers to make sure that we finish the contract year by the end of May so that they receive their entire benefit for June, July, and August.
Well, we certainly always want to support those staff whenever we can, and it seems like a great opportunity. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the calendar as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved by Linda Alderman and seconded by Chris Cunningham that we approve the modified calendar for twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-one. Rule call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh. And we are down to gating metrics. Dr. Cobb's, update us, please.
All right. So, one of the things that, that we are seeing is we, we had this expectation, and there are a lot of districts out there that continue to go remote after, after the break for fear of a, of an outbreak post-holiday season. We've not seen it, the county really hasn't seen it. If you look at the, at the county's gating metrics as of one-ten, their, their positive cases per one hundred thousand was at sixty-six point six, which is the lowest rate that it's been since probably September. I think October, we saw them beginning to climb. Certainly, in November, we've been six hundred, five hundred, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and forty, six hundred, almost seven hundred, six hundred, five hundred, almost seven hundred. One-three got us down to two-sixty-something, one-ten at sixty-six, and currently, we're at about eighty-six point one for, for last week. So, we're beginning to see those positive cases come down, which is, is a huge positive for us. Hospital beds in the Northeast still remain fairly consistent, which is about a third of the open, of beds still open. Again, it's, it's somewhat misleading, as I don't know that I would consider Ottawa to be in the Northeast area, where we're probably more connected to, to the metropolitan area in Johnson County than we are the Northeast area. But that's beside the point. All in all, the gating metrics across the county are looking pretty good. We're beginning to see vaccines take place. We've had two different weekends now where we've helped the county provide vaccines. Over five hundred doses now, I believe, have been given out in the last two weeks. We had the first a week ago, second group last week, or this weekend, that got us to, I think, about age seventy or so. So, we'll continue to see that trickle down as we get into phase two. We will be taking care of all of our staff. So, one of the, one of the concerns was that we would only be addressing those folks that live within the county. The reality in having some conversations with, with Derek Brown and, and Dr. Ransom was that we will, we will take care of all of our employees.
Good.
And, and that's certainly a positive thing. The first group that's getting the second round of vaccines will take place February thirtieth at Ottawa Middle School, so, or February thirteenth at Ottawa Middle School. So, that will be a positive and a step in the right direction as well, as we are getting closer to getting this in the, into the arms of our staff. When, when that occurs, we will, we will do so in the building. So, I would imagine that what will occur is that I will get a call from, from either Nick or Derek or Tim that will say, hey, we have so many doses. Which building are, are we going to start with? And we will go to that building, set up a, a system there in which we can provide the vaccine to our staff for those that want it. We will not mandate the staff or the, the vaccine for our staff, but those that want it will surely have access to it once we have access. They will have to remain in, in the gym or wherever we're going to do this, most likely in the gym, for twenty minutes to be observed to make sure that there are no adverse reactions. After that, we should be good to go. So, we'll have plans in place once we know when it can occur to make sure that we can take care of our staff. And it will be all of our staff, licensed staff, classified staff, custodial staff, transportation, and food service as well. We'll take care of everybody as, as we get going. Our school-wide metrics are really good right now, and I can tell you that, that the vast majority of our schools are at zero percent positive cases for students, and we have one that is at point fourteen percent. So, almost no cases existing within our, within our schools. We're still dealing with some staffing issues, but again, nothing, nothing major that we can't, that we can't address at this point. And we certainly want our staff to be safe, and we hope that those that are dealing with quarantine and positive cases are, are taking care of themselves and getting the help that they need to get through it. But all in all, our schools are very, very safe at this point, and I think that we're continuing to see that be, be stated across the state of Kansas and certainly from our own Department of Education and our health departments. So, excited about the things that our custodial maintenance staff and our teaching staff and our support staff have been able to provide in our buildings as we've had to go through this. So, thank you to them.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. We do not need an executive session tonight for personnel, but you all have been presented with the personnel report. Would somebody like to make a motion that we approve tonight's personnel report?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Harold Wingert that we approve tonight's personnel report. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes seven oh, and we are down to announcements.
Okay, maybe first and foremost, it's winter royalty week, so you'll be seeing some really weird things. It'll be pajama day and cowboy day and Hawaiian shirt day and whatever day it happens to be. We'll see those things over the course of the next few days. Winter royalty will take place on Friday night. We'll actually get to do something kind of fun, and our, and our kids will get to go out there, and it's been a little while since we've been able to do some of these things. So, as things begin to open up a little bit, it's, it's kind, it's good to, to kind of get back to some of the normal things that, that make high school part of, of something great for our kids. We also have the county spelling bee coming up. It's on Thursday. It will be at the, at the P A C. It will be livestreamed, so we'll get to see it all if you, if you're not able to attend, and I think only parents are allowed to attend at this point. So, we'll, we'll go from there. Many of you, all of you, as a matter of fact, except for Shanda this morning, were able to participate in our Cognia visit. It has gone well over the course of the first day, and we continue to, to go into that tomorrow. Tomorrow, they will interview teachers and then parents and then students from elementary and secondary schools, and that'll get them through the midday, and then they'll have the rest of the afternoon to work and, and probably like today, will call me around two o'clock to ask me a bunch of questions, which was, was kind of interesting to see how all of their data began to come together and, and focus on, on specific items. But we'll continue to do that, and then on Wednesday, I think at two-fifteen, they will have their announcement as, as to our accreditation process, their findings of what we're doing really well, and some areas that we can focus on moving forward. And then, of course, you should all have on your desks some cards, some of them from entire buildings, some of them from, from specific people for Board Member Appreciation Month. It was interesting in, in talking with, with Stephen Sargent, with Dr. Sargent today after our Cognia visit, that was very impressed with the togetherness of our board and the conversations that existed after, after your guys' meeting this morning. I think that it, it speaks volumes to the, the approach that you take here, and I cannot express my gratitude enough for allowing us to work in this environment, for being incredibly supportive and understanding of, of the, the ebbs and flows of education as they, as they come and go, and certainly in the environment that we, that we're living in today. I, I appreciate you very much, and as a small token from, from some of the people who, who showed you things today as to your importance to this district. It doesn't operate without you. So, we appreciate you all very much. Thank you for all that you do. It's a thankless job. You certainly don't get paid for it. But hopefully, when we have great days like today, when Greg Varnberg says that we've just saved our district thirteen million dollars, that we can pat ourselves on the back and say we've made a difference for our community. Not only do we have great spaces, but we've cut years off of a bond, and we've saved millions of dollars in terms of taxpayer debt to our, to our community. So, your guys' role is incredibly important, and we appreciate you all very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Cobb's.
I do have a question. Will they, that announcement, will we, it would be by Zoom? Can we attend any of that or just a general announcement to you and the staff and?
No, I think you can attend, and if we need to do another waiver of notice, we'll certainly do so if we, if we go over.
Will you send a link out or something?